Good evening. A way to get quiet before we even wrap the gavel. Welcome to the Henrico County School Board meeting, monthly meeting, Thursday, March 27th, 2025. Colleagues, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move the school board approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Moved by Ms. Cancela, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Irving, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda has been approved. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you Chair Shay, members of the board and to our guests, welcome. We will begin our school board meeting as we always do, which is with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence. And we are going to have the honor of having the pledge led by students from Ash Elementary School. And Principal Mills is going to come up and introduce the students who will be leading us in the pledge.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Cashwell, tonight representing author Ash Junior Elementary School, we have Aria Moore, Harmony Johnson, Jamir Edmonds, and Zaimir Givens.
Welcome. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'd ask that you remain standing after the pledge as you're able for a brief moment of silence. Students?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would remain standing as you're able for the moment of silence. And that concludes our moment of silence. You may be seated. And how about a round of applause for our students from Ash Elementary School? And if you would please, we are going to join you all in the audience because we next have a performance for students from Tuckahoe Middle School.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I am the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. And as we celebrate Arts in Our Schools Month, it is my pleasure to introduce for our performance highlight this evening, the Tuckahoe Middle School Theater Students under the direction of Mr. Derek Phipps. Are you ready? That was perfect, it's my music, yeah. Mr. Phipps has been teaching for 20 years as a theater teacher at Tuckahoe Middle School. And the students tonight are gonna perform two selections from their spring musical, which was Guys and Dolls. They'll do Marry the Man Today and Luck Be a Lady. All right, please help me recognize these students as they come forward.
$1,000 cash against the mind of your souls. If I win, you guys all will show up when the mission's back. Okay, what meaning?
Okay, what need?
I need too.
You too, baby. $1,000 against your soul. I don't know my God. You got some place, give me the lights and give me a room. I don't want to know. Hey, holy, you save us. But there is food for now. I should have married our lady like we are now. Your body fades. The figure is having fun. And yet, before this evening is over, you might fear in the dark. Your fights against your matters. Your fights are today. And so the best that I can do is luck be a lady tonight. Luck be a lady tonight. Luck be a better lady to take a breath. Luck be a little. I will give you $1,000 against your souls. $1,000 cash against the mind of your souls. If I win, you guys all will show up when the mission's back. Okay, what meaning?
Okay, what need?
I need too.
You too, baby. $1,000 against your soul. I don't know my God. You got some place, give me the lights and give me a room. I don't want to know. Hey, holy, you save us. But there is food for now. I should have married our lady like we are now. Your body fades. The figure is having fun. And yet, before this evening is over, you might fear in the dark. Your fights against your matters. Your fights are today. And so the best that I can do is luck be a lady tonight. Luck be a lady tonight. Luck be a better lady to take a breath. Luck be a little. I will give you $1,000 against your souls. Luck be a lady. I will give you $1,000 against your souls. Luck be a lady. She had a heart and she had a soul. Her name was named. Stay by the feet, I swear I have a life on this road. So let's look at my soul. Are you alive there? And are you happy? You gave me a baby. Luck be a lady. Luck be a lady. Oh, dear. What's in that? Oh, man, no, oh, man, no, oh, man, no, oh, man, no.
How about one more round of applause for our students?
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members and Dr. Cashwell. For our first recognition this evening, we are proud to welcome 8th grader Roe Thomas from Tuckahoe Middle School. Roe recently took top honors at the Henrico County Public Schools Spelling Bee by correctly spelling the word ubiquity in the 13th round. Ubiquity, by the way, is a noun of Latin origin, meaning the state or capacity of being everywhere, especially at the same time. Roe is no stranger to the spelling bee world. In fact, this is his second championship title, two years in a row. His victory advanced him to the Richmond International Raceway's Regional B earlier this month. At the competition, Roe finished second. We are incredibly proud of his accomplishments and are excited to celebrate him this evening. Congratulations, Roe.
Up next, we would like to recognize the very talented student artist whose work is on display as part of the School Division's annual School Board Art Show. We will begin with our elementary schools. Please welcome from Adams Elementary, Sebastian Chatten. From Chamberlain Elementary, Hayden Hayes. From Colonial Trail Elementary, Vianna Rao. From Crestview Elementary, Zamir King. From Fair Oaks Elementary, Vanessa Tian Valdez. From Gayton Elementary, Aleah Alvano. From Glen Allen Elementary, Amelia McMillan. From Holiday Elementary, Maven Kim. From Cackley Elementary, Samaya Malama. From Lakeside Elementary, Maddox Berry. From Longan Elementary, Mateo Salcedo. From Longdale Elementary, Karia Rezak. From Mayberry Elementary, Harper Swartzell. From Mayford Elementary, Everly Register. From Montrose Elementary, Amarian Penn. From Knuckles Farm Elementary, Samantha Ray. From Pemberton Elementary, Nora Kelly. From Pinchback Elementary, Addie Ireland. From Rivers Edge Elementary, Bailey Dutton. From Seven Pines Elementary, Melody Felton. From Shore Pump Elementary, Kalina Ambrose. From Tuckahoe Elementary, Ingrid Rouse. Is there anybody from the elementary level I did not call? Carrie Gardner from Echo Lake. Yep. How do you say the last name?
It's Royce, Royce.
Royce. From Tuckahoe Elementary, Ingrid Royce. Okay, one more? Yep, I got you, yep. From Dumbarton Elementary, Samuel Ebuehde? Ebuehde? Congratulations. Yes, okay. From Ward Elementary, Raquel Johnson. The annual art show is a culmination of our celebration of Youth Art Month. These incredible student artists exemplify the talent, creativity and passion expressed by students in art classes all across Henrico County. Please join me in congratulating our elementary school student artists. From Ridge Elementary, Hadassa Romero Ortiz. Moving on to middle school now, the works of these student artists take a variety of forms and mediums. Please welcome from Brooklyn Middle, Jalisa Mendoza Rhodas. Leila Murray. Angelus Montevo Caldera. From Hungry Creek Middle School, Ryan Turath. Maria Flores Penalis. From Moody Middle School, Lily Yang. Savannah Shihate. Araya Bado Darlia. From Pocahontas Middle, Gemma Lascano. Arushi Guduro. From Kuyakason Middle, Vicky Yang. Geneva Stam. From Shore Pump Middle, Teja Bandy. Colette Cho. And Kinsley Dow. From Tuckahoe Middle School, Nandwa Lemu. Peter Fry. From Pocahontas Middle, Camille Johnstone. Is there anyone from the middle school level that I did not call? Congratulations to our middle school artists. And finally, we want to honor our student artists at the high school level. From Freeman High School, Carson Cal. From Glen Allen High School, Ragay Centrasan. From Godwin High School, Maria Silva. From Henrico High School, Alyssa Jefferson. From Hermitage High School, Dominic Kimball. Chris Herrera Gudrez. From Tucker High School, Cadence Martin. From Verina High School, Jaden Fields. Is there anyone I did not call? The visual arts talent in this room is truly remarkable. Students, we encourage you to continue to create in whatever medium you prefer. Your work showcases your unique perspective and brings meaning, color and life to our community. Please join me in giving our student artists a round of applause. I'd now like to invite students and families to join us upstairs in rooms 218 and 219 to view the artwork not on display here in the auditorium. Thank you.
I wait till they clear out. Thank you so much.
I know recognition this evening. The school board is pleased to welcome HCPS Education Specialist Kendall Hunt. Kendall was recently selected as a 2025 Virginia Literacy Teacher of the Year by James Madison University. This award recognizes contributions to evidence and research-based literacy instruction across the Commonwealth. Kendall's innovative work as the educational specialist focused on middle school literacy makes her a more than deserving recipient. Kendall's commitment to ensuring all HCPS middle school students are engaged in world-class reading and writing instruction. She also creates and supervises a robust approach to reading intervention to close foundational reading gaps. Thanks to Kendall's efforts, middle school students are not only learning the mechanics of reading, but many are gaining a love of reading that will serve them well throughout their lives. Congratulations, Kendall Hunt. JMU's 2025 Virginia Literacy Teacher of the Year.
Thank you so much and congratulations to all that were recognized. We have a few month recognitions. And so we will start with Ms. Cancela.
Irish American Heritage Month. Whereas, the Irish American community stands as a diverse representation of historical and cultural contributions with local, national and global impact. And whereas vital contributions to the fields of business and industry, the arts, entertainment, civil service and politics have been made possible by Irish Americans who sacrificed and persevered through hardship and adversity with strength and resilience. And whereas citizens are encouraged to participate in activities that recognize, appreciate and celebrate the cultural diversity and the significant contributions made by Irish Americans. And whereas Henrico County Public Schools and the Henrico community recognize and embrace vital Irish American community that continues to shape and strengthen our schools, our country, our county and our world. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools recognize March 2025 as Irish American Heritage Month and encourage observance and celebration to the attention of our citizens. Recognized by the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools this 27th day of March, 2025.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cancela. Mr. Irving?
Arab American Heritage Month. Whereas Henrico County and Henrico County Public Schools are home to a growing number of Arab American families and students, including individuals of Middle Eastern and North African origin. And whereas Henrico County Public Schools proclaims that diversity is its greatest strength. And whereas Arab Americans continue to make valuable contributions to the vitality of our community and country and bring rich cultural traditions to our schools. And whereas we seek to acknowledge and learn more about Arab Americans' history, culture and achievements. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools recognize April 2025 as Arab American Heritage Month and observe this month with appropriate programs and activities throughout our schools. Recognized by the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools this 27th day of March, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Ms. Atkins?
School Library Month. Whereas, the school library is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information. And whereas, the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the school library is an integral part or the instructional program of the school. And whereas, the school board has entrusted school librarians to teach the skill of locating and using information, to provide literature appreciation activities and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student. And whereas, the school library contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education. And whereas, the school librarians of Henrico County Public Schools have dedicated themselves to work for quality school libraries for all students. Now therefore, be it Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools recognize April 2025 as School Library Month, recognized by the School Board of Henrico County Public Schools this 27th day of March 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Dr. Cashwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The next item on our agenda is our Henrico highlights, and this is our opportunity each month to shine a spotlight on the programs, activities, and of course, classroom teaching and learning that make Henrico County so outstanding. Tonight's Henrico highlight is a real page turner as we learn more about All Henrico Reads. Let's take a look.
All Henrico Reads is an event where we partnered with the public library, and we had Nick Stone, who is a phenomenal writer, and we were able to invite kids from 4th grade through 12th grade to see her speak and to experience the excitement of reading books and getting to know an author.
I didn't actually know that I wanted to be a writer until I was an adult. It's less that I didn't know I wanted to be a writer and more that I didn't know that I could be a writer. Are there many inspiring writers out there? All of you should raise your hand.
I thought her talk was great. It wasn't just about one of the three books that we read. It was about what makes people tick and what's about what inspires people. It's about how do you get better?
Your first draft of your essay is not your best work. So tuck into the toughest question in your mind, do you want to be done or do you want to be excellent? Because those don't always go together.
So this year, the Office of Equity, Diversity, and Opportunity partnered with our Division of Learning and Library Services, and we hosted an event the evening before the countywide day event in which we invited community members and families to get to know this year's featured author, Nick Stone.
Sit down and just make stuff up all day, and then people give me money.
We wanted to make sure that our parents, who oftentimes don't get the opportunity during the day, right, to experience what their children are experiencing, that they were given the opportunity to meet this author in person and to experience that with their child.
Are you ready to get started? Let's get it.
Instead of having students question from the audience, we harvest as many questions from the students as we can, and then we get a student to ask questions.
What are some of your other sources, inspirations for your book? Ooh, this is good, good, good question. They're all over the place.
So then kids get to get their books signed, and that's really where the magic happens. Is that that one or two seconds that the kid gets to spend with the author, that's where the author is on, and those are their people. That's who they want to talk to. They want to talk to the kids.
Do the things that you really want to do, and just know that you're going to have to work to maintain, okay?
Well, AllHenrico Reads is one of my favorite annual events, and reading and literacy are the foundation of all learning. To see our school community come together to grow their love of reading warms my former elementary school teacher heart. And speaking of heart, it's time once again to honor our Heart of Henrico. As you heard in tonight's student recognition, March is Youth Art Month. Earlier, we celebrated our incredible student artists, and in tonight's Heart of Henrico, we visit art classes across the school division to see how our amazing art teachers support their students' passions while teaching techniques. The results are masterpieces.
To see the numbers of almost 6,000 people who came through here was so surprising. Grandparents and multi-generational groups were coming through. It really was bigger than just one school or one county, really.
Okay, the guidelines seem to help a lot of people. Give a thumbs up if that helped you.
Good job. You drew that line out with your fingers? Good job.
Is there a way to like bring the year out more in here?
You're just going to spread it around so it gets a nice clear coat.
That looks good. One of the nice like.
It doesn't actually hurt. So you kind of just got to trust the process.
Do it again. Way up. And go back a little bit.
Nice, it's got nice weight. It's a little thick at the top, so you want to make sure you're pinching it, thinning it as you go.
If you put salt on it and in the water, it'll like give it a little texture.
I think that every student has the seed of a creative artist in them, and it's just finding what's going to make that seed grow into something.
This design was very popular in the early medieval times.
We have the ongoing project of working on our Youth Art Month flags.
She gets so many layers with the pen into the three-dimensional polygraph.
Which element of art are you using to make them look 3D?
You want to use the golden?
Sometimes I take a roller and just kind of lightly divot the line.
So that you can turn the whole thing inside out.
They go to your vanishing points. They all go to this vanishing point.
Well, I think what you did is perfect because you see a lot of black and white.
Okay.
Can you do that one too?
No, you try.
We are so fortunate to have such caring and creative art teachers in our schools, many of whom are also artists in their own right. And I believe, while we had several art teachers here, who I think mostly joined their students as is fitting upstairs for the art show, but if any are still in the audience, would you please join Mike Calafattis and come to the front and please stand so we can applaud you for your work? Representing all of our fabulous artists and art teachers. And as Mrs. Shea makes her way back to the seat, I'll note that March is also Music in Our Schools Month, and we saw the caliber of our music education program earlier with the student performance from Tuckahoe Middle School. And so I would be remiss if I did not also thank all of our incredible music teachers and sponsors of various bands and choral groups in our schools. There is certainly no shortage of talent across our schools. Madam Chair, that completes our highlights and recognition for this evening. Thank you so much. Mr. Young, would you share our mission statement, please?
Absolutely. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Young. The next item on the agenda is public forum. This is a time when citizens are invited to address the school board on any matter of concern about the school division. Citizens have signed up in advance and will be given three minutes to address the school board. Speakers will be called to speak in order in which they signed up and may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name and a school affiliation if applicable. After stating your name, please place the number you were given in the cart next to the podium. Speakers must present their remarks to the school board, not the audience, and may provide copies of their remarks and comments to the school board clerk. The use of obscenity or defamation is strictly prohibited and will be ruled out of order. To assist you in tracking your time, there is a timekeeping system displaying the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from me when the time has expired. The school board is here today to hear from you. We will not be responding to speakers' concerns or questions during the public forum. However, a Henrico staff member will follow up with speakers. The first speaker this evening is Speaker Number One.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Cashwell, Ryan Young, Fairfield District. The first thing I wanted to talk about was you all had us to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Ma'am, sorry, can we pause? I want to make sure your microphone's on so that we can all hear you. So if you can get just a second, and we'll restart your time. Thank you.
Cheryl Wilson.
All right, Speaker Number One, we will restart your time if you will begin again. Thank you so much.
I'm Cheryl Wilson, Fairfield District, Dr. Cashwell. When we first came in, you had us to pledge allegiance to the flag. My grandson attended Henrico High School. He had disabilities. And you, at the end of that pledge of allegiance, it says liberty and justice for all. I want that to set in just a few seconds. Liberty and justice for all. I said in a due process last week with another child, African American, same exact thing, same exact situation. I got a letter from OCR last month where 100% of our African American black boys are being funneled from this school to prison pipe one. As a black mother, as a black grandmother, as a black aunt, as a black great aunt, we in this county is not going to allow y'all to be comfortable of sending our children to prison. That is no way. I grew up in a segregated area, and the punishment that you all afflicted on our children with disabilities is far more worse than what I had to endure as a child coming up in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. It has to be something in place for our children. This is not my data. This is y'all's data sent to OCR. This is what's happening in the county. So when each one of you all pledge allegiance to the flag, I want you to think about, is you giving your children, our own children, liberty and justice for all? I want you to think about that. Because some children won't get the opportunity that Jaquais had because of his grandmother. He had a praying grandmother. He had somebody standing in the gap. But there are some children that are not going to see that, that it just drop out or fall by the wayside. I refuse to let that happen to my grandson. So I'm just going to pray that God did with each and every one of your hearts about these children with disabilities. And before I get off, the regulations grub of special education, this is what I call the Purple Bible. The Virginia Department of Education got plenty of them. You need to start giving them to your administrators so that they know their jobs, that they know that these children under IDEA is protected, that you just can't send them to jail without doing an MDR. These are things that this school district is poorly incompetent of doing. But I'm here to stand to make sure it gets done, and I'm not going to stop until I get the liberty and justice for Jaquais.
Thank you. Speaker Number Two. Is Speaker Number Two present? Speaker Number Three.
Good evening, Dr. Cashwell, Madam Chair, Board Members, colleagues, and community members. My name is Lauren Galloway. I am a teacher at the elementary level in the Tuckahoe District, and I reside in the Three Chop District. I would like to speak with you tonight about the phrase in our current contract, "Other Duties as Assigned." In the addendum, county leadership has drafted to address staff concerns over contract clarity. Every single day, teachers, IAs, and school staff are being assigned additional duties that go beyond the scope of our contracts in exploitative ways. We are asked to split or cover classes with no compensation at the elementary level. We are required to attend IEP 504 and Behavior Plan Meetings during our planning and lunch periods. Teachers are asked to supervise lunch because there are not enough monitors, or teachers do it of their own accord because it's easier than dealing with the behaviors that occur when students are not well managed. Teachers are required to sign up for and attend all manner of committees, clubs, and school events. Planning time is taken up for micromanaged performative data meetings with admin. ESL, gifted, SLP, and EXED teacher caseloads are overflowing with no enforced cap or compensation in sight. We are constantly being asked to go above and beyond. Do it for the kids. Be a team player. We all have to pick up the slack. We're a family. This is what makes the phrase "Other Duties as Assigned" so problematic. It is fine and good to say that teachers have 30-minute lunches and 40 minutes of planning a day, but as you can see, what is written on paper is not what is transpiring in our school buildings. The things I mentioned and more are happening every single day. The drafted addendum attempts to provide clarity, but it's still too vague. It does not sufficiently address what staff has been asking for. This is a classic case of something working in theory but not in practice. Teachers, IAs, and other school staff need a seat at the table. The language needs to be explicit. You need to hear from us directly, the people actually doing the work. Tac has been ineffectual at this task. I have never once had communication from our one tac representative about anything discussed at meetings. This is nothing new. The school board has been hearing the same things from teachers and support staff for years now. We continue to be pushed off with weak excuses. Henrico County Schools need collective bargaining, and it is time for the school board to take real action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Speaker Three. Speaker Four.
Hello, my name is Jane Patrick, and I attend school in the Three Chop District, but this applies to many, if not all, the districts in the Henrico area. For the past four years, I have endured many, many cases of harassment from not only students but teachers as well, from freshmen, sophomore, junior, and my current senior year. Whether this teacher is sent home on suspension and comes back and makes the class uncomfortable and unable to learn, or it's students preventing me and cornering me, threatening me with violence, and the teacher tells me to take it as a compliment or ask what I was wearing, or the usual suspects whenever this topic is brought up. And I feel every time I do try to address this with anybody with serious matters in mind, it comes down to telling me, oh, you should watch this episode of Bluey about how you need to get your big girl bark back, or, oh, take it as a compliment, they mean good, even though I would sit and wake up in dread coming to school, knowing what I would face the next day and the next and the next. I urge the school board to adopt proactive measures for these schools, mandatory education for students and these teachers committing these acts on harassment and assault. These ideas of consent could easily be implemented. Accountability mechanisms should be strengthened to investigate misconduct promptly and prevent repeat offenses. Together, these actions can create a culture where every student feels safe and valued and empowered. I am tired of feeling unsafe and unheard in a placement to foster growth and learning. Many students struggle to recognize harassment or assaults, often realizing its impact only after it has left lasting emotional scars. The fear of being dismissed, shamed, or silenced keeps too many of us from speaking out. The fact I have been told not to speak on this matter due to the sensitivity of the topic stresses how much it should not be happening in a school setting. When one in nine girls and one in 20 boys under the age of 18 face harassment, abuse, or assault, we should be taking more measures to make sure it is not happening, at least in a school setting. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Four. Speaker Number Five.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Cashwell. My name is Lauren Johnson. I represent Holland Springs High School in the Verona District where I also live. From 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM every day, I have the pleasure of being a coach, a teacher, and a parent, all within the same building, for the past 17 years, I may say. I've seen many tough situations over the years, but nothing like what occurred on Tuesday, March 25th. At approximately 11:05, I was a staff member who had to step in and try to stop a physical altercation involving five young ladies. This wasn't a typical incident. Multiple events, multiple events were happening simultaneously, creating a chaotic and dangerous situation in our school. In the past, I could rely on nearly school. In the past, I could rely on nearby colleagues for assistance, but on March 25, the sheer number of incidents made it feel impossible to manage. I'm not here to debate whether requests for more security have been made by my principal and other staff members, but I am here to emphasize the urgent need for more security support in our building. These are not new problems. In my 17 years in this building, these have been ongoing concerns, regardless of who the principal has been. It often feels like there's been a lack of real concern or urgency to address the unique safety needs of our school population. We have the largest student population in the county, yet seemingly no more security personnel than smaller schools. Our building has close to 30 exterior access doors, each one representing a safety risk if not properly monitored. We are designated an opportunity school for a reason, and with that designation come challenges that demand more support, not less. The building wears down those who are capable and willing like myself, those who step in day after day, giving their all to hold things together. It's very frustrating and disheartening to continually operate under these conditions without meaningful change. To me, safety is equity. Every student and staff member in this building deserves to feel just as safe and supported as those in any other school in the county on any given day. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Five. Speaker Number Six?
If that's me.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Marlene Sherlock, and our family lives in the Fairfield District. This evening, I'd like to address proposed policy P-1008002 on school attendance zones slated for approval in April. Thank you for postponing your vote from last month on it, but I have to wonder if the public has really grasped the concept that you intend to eliminate any future dedicated redistricting committees in favor of a, quote, "plan for community engagement." Ironically, however, I applaud you for making policy match past practice. In the prior two comprehensive boundary reviews, there were committees and meetings and meetings and committees, yet in the end, there seemed to be a last-minute staff or consultant-prepared version that all too quickly became a board favorite. I remember a few committee members and certainly citizens who were frustrated by those behind-the-scenes negotiations and felt their extensive upfront and public discussions seemed for naught. So I suppose it's better to just propose what you or the staff really wants and let the public have at it at a few meetings rather than perpetuate a farce that's some communal from-the-ground-up effort. Save that time, effort, and money for implementing it. What I'm here to suggest are a few points of clarification your policy could include. There are matters of timing, prior moves, and grandfathering. As for the timing, I do favor the "at least every four years" part, mostly because it means every board will have to make some boundary assessment evaluation, but I'd like the policy to more clearly state when that four-year cycle begins and whether or not any small mid-cycle adjustments satisfy the criteria and resets the four-year clock. Or if it's a more set four-year timeframe, much like your own terms, that could have a special election or appointment if necessary. Second, because a four-year cycle is relatively short, much shorter than our previous 10-year ones, it's quite conceivable a neighborhood near a boundary line would be frequently moved. Could they or should they be excused from successive adjustments, much like a seated juror from jury duty again for another three years? And finally, grandfathering. I know it's a loaded issue and one I believe partially derailed your talks last month. Do you, don't you, which grades, and do you provide transportation for those students? Those are very high-level policy questions that deserve your careful consideration before embarking on any specific boundary adjustment. What you do for one, you should do for all, and those costs, if any, should absolutely influence your decisions. Please consider adding just a bit more clarity to this essentially completely new policy and get ready to go to work this fall, as any comprehensive review will and should take considerable effort.
Thank you, Speaker Number Six. And that concludes our public comment. We also received written public comments as well. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Colleagues, we're looking at items 9.01 through 9.12. Are there any of these items that you would like to separate out for separate consideration, discussion, action? Hearing none, we will keep them as a consent block. Do I have a motion?
A move that the School Board accept, adopt, approve, and/or award items 9.01 through 9.12 on the Consent Agenda as presented.
Moved by Mr. Irving. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Young. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The Consent Agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, do you have any unfinished business for this evening? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is new business. Colleagues, do you have any new business this evening? Hearing none. The last item on the agenda is the announcement of upcoming meeting dates. Our next meetings will be April 17, 2025, a 3:00 p.m. work session and a 5:30 p.m. monthly meeting right here in the Newbridge Learning Auditorium. Times may be adjusted as needed. Everyone, have a great spring break.